All right, it is 7:01 PM and I would like to call this meeting to order. While this meeting is being held in person, we are also offering the option for the public to participate through Zoom if preferred. Instructions on how to participate virtually are included in the City Council Calendar item listed on the front page of MissionKS.org. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Robin, please call the roll.
Thomas.
Wilson House.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Friar.
Here.
King.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Susie.
Here.
All right, we do not have any public hearings tonight, so we will move on to our special presentations. Our first proclamation tonight recognizes September as National Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month. Many organizations and individuals throughout our community work to collaborate and raise awareness of the suicide prevention resources which are available to all. I would particularly like to recognize and thank our educators, mental health professionals, police officers, and our mental health co-responder for all their work on this crucial matter. I would also like to note for the record, the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline that is staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to assist those in need as well as provide support for their loved ones. You can call 988 on any telephone and connect with a local call center with trained mental health professionals who are available 24/7 to provide support, listen, and provide guidance on next steps to keep yourself and others safe. Johnson County Mental Health Center's 24/7 crisis line is also available to our community. Help is available day or night by calling 913-268-0156. We hope for continued progress for those tirelessly working in this effort and while being in care for those experiencing distress. Our second and final presentation this evening is Recognizing Diaper Needs Awareness Week for 2023. For the past few years, Mission has observed this week by issuing a proclamation to raise awareness on the widespread need for diapers to improve the health and welfare of infants and toddlers. In the Kansas City area, 22,000 children need diaper assistance each year. Diapers cannot be bought with food stamps or WIC vouchers, and a monthly supply can cost on average $100 or as much as 6% of a full-time minimum wage worker's salaries. Families living in the urban core without access to big-box or warehouse stores must pay a premium at their corner store or local market. We encourage the communities to support this important effort and provide relief to those in need by donating to the Happy Bottoms Diaper Bank in Kansas City. Next on our agenda is Executive Session. We do have the need for an executive session this evening. The governing body will adjourn to executive session for the allotted time. When that time has expired, the governing body will reconvene to do one of the following: extend the time required for discussion and return to executive session, or continue with our City Council meeting. As a reminder to the public, the governing body may take no binding action in executive session. I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move the City Council recess to executive session in accordance with KSA 75-4319B1 to consult with an attorney under KSA 75-4319B2. Also attending the executive session will be City Attorney Dave Martin, City Attorney Jacob Turner, Police Chief Dan Madden, and City Administrator Laura Smith. The open meeting will resume in the council chambers at 7:20 PM in 15 minutes.
All right, we have a motion and a second and a discussion? Oh, a second, sorry, jumping the gun. Motion, a second, any discussion? Robin, please call the roll.
Susie.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Thomas.
Yes.
Wilson House.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Friar.
Aye.
Mission carries.
Off we go.
All right.
Pull or nail.
All right.
Coordinate our.
Yeah.
What?
Stretch. I hear it's happening this year. We need to make sure. Are we good, Robin? Or do we need to wait? Like, okay. All right, it is 7:20 and we have returned from executive session. I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move the City Council again recess to executive session in accordance with KSA 75-4319B1 to consult with an attorney under KSA 75-4319B2. Attending the executive session will be City Attorneys Dave Martin and Jacob Turner, Police Chief Dan Madden, and City Administrator Laura Smith. The open meeting will resume in the council chambers in 10 minutes at 7:31 PM.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Oh, some favors, say aye.
All right, it is seven thirty and we have returned from executive session. I would entertain a motion. Are we, are we ready to continue with our city council meeting?
See no objection.
Yes, okay. We don't need a motion, do we Laura? Okay, okay, we are good. As a reminder to the public, the governing body may take no binding action in an executive session. So next we would move on to issue issuance of notes and bonds. We do not have any items related to the issuance of notes and bonds this evening, so we will move into our consent agenda. Our consent agenda has seven items tonight. Our council meeting, our council committee is met on September sixth and fully discussed each of these items. The committees agreed that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. If a council member or member of the public would like any item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, remove the city council, adopt the consent agenda as printed items five A through five G.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Robin, please call the roll.
Loudon.
I.
Josie.
I.
Ryder.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Thomas, yes.
Boating House.
I.
King.
I.
She carries.
All right, we will now move into public comments. If any members of the public, any member of the public would like to make a comment on items not included on tonight's agenda, now would be the time. If you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud. Or note that you would like to speak and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are a part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand but stay seated and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Do we have any comment on items not on the agenda? Rob, anything online? Okay. Next, we move into our action items. We do have two items coming forward from the planning commission. The first is consideration of our preliminary development plan for Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen Restaurant. Brian, will you please provide your report?
Thinking mayor. This is consideration of a preliminary development plan for a new Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen Restaurant. Located sixty-eight twenty-one Johnson Drive. This is PC case number twenty-three sixteen. There is currently Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen Restaurant at this location that was built in nineteen seventy-seven. And that restaurant sustained pretty serious damage due to a fire that occurred at the beginning of this year. So the ownership group after kind of examining their options decided that it'd be more feasible for them to to scrape the existing building and build entirely new building on that site. So that's the reason why we're here tonight for the preliminary development plan of that building. The site is exactly half an acre, just a little bit under half an acre. And that's according to information from the automated mapping information system provided by Johnson County. And that includes basically the lot that you see here on the map. The site is located in the foreign-based code zoning district. And a one-story building is allowed under the foreign-based code for an acre that's half of the site that's half an acre or less. With the foreign-based code, we try to strive to have the building sitting, fronting the main road, which in this case would be Johnson Drive. We discussed that with the applicant early on in the process. And they, they considered this option. The challenge would be that the front of the building and the dining area would essentially be at the corner Johnson Drive and Broadmore. While the drive-through would be in the back long where it currently is at on the east side of the lot. And this does not provide a functional layout for the operation of the restaurant. So they've kind of gone back to this design that looks very similar to the current restaurant that's there. Where the building is located on the east side. With the driveway that comes up or drive-through that comes up from the south. And then goes along the east side of the building between that and the natural grocers, that's to the east of that site. They had twenty-one parking spaces on the original site. They've reduced these to, I believe, sixteen. And in lieu of that, they've created a wall around the parking lot. The wall is about six feet tall, some I recall windows in the wall that kind of allow for some observation into the parking lot area and some natural light. And then there's also some setbacks along the front of the wall on Johnson Drive. That allows for a bench, some landscaping areas. And then some outdoor dining areas to kind of provide some activity of Johnson Drive and that sidewalk area. So all of that's kind of complying to the foreign-based code. The building is also twenty-six feet tall, which is a requirement of the foreign-based code. And so when you look at it, you actually think it might be a two-story building, although it's not. So it has what's called spandrel windows across the top that kind of give the appearance of possibly a two-story building. They are providing a double cuing of the drive-through. This will help to alleviate some issues we've had in the past with spillage during peak hours onto Broadmore from the drive-through. We examined that pretty thoroughly and asked for traffic counts from other stores of a similar design or nature. They were able to provide those and our traffic engineer reviewed those and we all felt satisfied with this being a solution that would work, so. I think that's really about my staff report. We do have an ordinance with a number of conditions and stipulations that it's kind of the standard boilerplate language. And then the applicant is here as well, if you have any questions of them, so.
Okay, first we will check for any public comment. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this issue? Seeing no hands, we'll open this up for council discussion. Any questions for Brian? Yeah, Leah?
Really, a question, but I was just glad to see the double cuing because that's something that people had asked me about when we were talking about Popeyes rebuilding and you know, the cuing down the street. Thank you for that. That's, that's a good, good idea.
Fortunately, we live in the day and age of cars and especially post-COVID where more and more people are opting just to do the drive-through. That's becoming more and more common, that double drive-through feature in restaurants like this.
Yeah, Debbie?
Is the seating still in the schematic like it, like it shows on here? The seating that's right along the sidewalk?
Yes.
Outside seating?
Yeah.
Yeah. It, the, the drawing looks really nice.
Yeah.
And, and Brian, can you remember, remind us, was it towards the end of the year that they were planning to open or early next year?
I, I would think probably about this time next year, by the time they get through all their approvals and construction drawings in and a permit pulled and break ground to get going with everything. I would imagine they'll be operational by late summer of next year.
Okay, late summer, great. Any other questions for Brian? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion on the preliminary development plan for Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen Restaurant.
Mayor, I move the city council approve a preliminary development plan for Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen Restaurant at sixty-eight twenty-seven Johnson Drive, PC case twenty-three sixteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
King. Josie.
I.
Boating House.
I.
Davis.
Hi.
Loudon.
Yes.
Thomas. Ryers.
I.
Mission carries.
All right, our final item for consideration from the planning commission is approval of a special use permit for discount sales outlet at fifty-four seventy Martway Street. Brian, will you please provide your report on this item?
Yeah. So Mr. Leo Lynch is here this evening. Is the owner of discount sales outlet. Which is located on Broadmore and it's been there for many, many years, fifty-nine thirty Broadmore Street. They sell primarily mattresses and furniture at the store. He's had a kind of a secondary location at fifty-four seventy Martway, which he's used as storage. And this location is actually in the building that's occupied by Domino's Pizza and FedEx that kind of sits there. That sort of odd intersection of Martway, Knoll and Johnson Drive. And he utilizes the basement. So that building, I believe, was built sometime in the nineteen forties or fifties and there's a full-size basement down there. And so he's been using a portion of that basement for many years. This is kind of storage. And he also has a while I call for lack of a better description, kind of a wholesale operation. Where he has a relationship with several non-for-profit organizations in the community that provide bedding for veterans. And that's kind of, he runs that operation out of that location. Mr. Lynch is intending to close his store in Broadmore in the near future, kind of a semi-retirement. But he would like to continue to have the wholesale operation out of the location of fifty-four seventy Martway. And so there would be no clients there, would not be a showroom, there'd be no one going there to select mattresses or anything like that, just purely storage, all the sales would be online or by phone. He would take the orders and deliver from that location to to where the customer is at. And then I think, you know, maybe a storage of a vehicle there inside, but it it's been there for years now, very nondescript. I don't think any of us really realized what that was until this came up. But because of the change, he needs to relocate his business license, which is what's triggered the special use permit. So, so that's why we're here tonight. This was considered by the planning commission at their meeting on the twenty-eighth, it was approved seven to zero for recommendation to the city council.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Lynch is here, if you have any questions.
Great. First, do we have any member of the public who would like to comment on this issue? Seeing none, we will open the floor for council discussion. Any questions for Brian or Mr. Lynch? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion on the special use permit.
Mayor, I move the city council approve this special use permit for discount sales outlet at fifty-four seventy Martway Street. PC case number twenty-three seventeen with an initial term of five years.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Robin, please call the roll.
Ryder.
I.
King.
I.
Thomas.
Yes.
Loudon.
Yes.
Boating House.
I.
Josie.
I.
Davis.
Hi.
Motion case.
All right, thank you. Next, we will move into our committee reports. Councilmember Ryard, will you please provide a report from the Finance and Administration Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Finance and Administration Committee met on September sixth and considered four items. The meeting minutes, taser lease and purchase slash purchase and the twenty-two-three STO UPOC adoption were approved under the consent agenda. The massage licensing ordinance revisions will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. As new forms of bodywork establishments open or evolve in the city of Mission, ordinances governing these establishments are reviewed. During a recent review, it was determined that updates to the Mission Municipal Code regulating massage establishments would be warranted. Currently, Mission Municipal Code regulates massage establishments as well as the persons who provide massages. Massage establishments, as well as the massage therapists, require background checks as well as educational requirements that help to ensure the safety of those who seek their services. In addition to those requirements, massage establishments can be, can be inspected by city staff to make sure they comply with all regulations related to their operations. Other businesses that provide services similar in nature are equally intimate and currently not regulated in the same fashion. To rectify this, staff recommends amending chapter six twenty of the Mission Municipal Code Massage Establishments. The specific articles to be amended include six-twenty dot zero one zero definitions. Changes to this section include updating the definition of massage to include sub-specialties of massage and other services similar in nature to massage. The definition also specifically excludes certain healthcare providers. Six-twenty dot zero nine zero, issuance of business permit. Changes to this section were made to more clearly define reasons applicants from a massage establishment permit can be denied. Six-twenty dot one zero zero, insurance of massage therapist permit. Changes to this section were made to more clearly define reasons applications for a massage therapist permit can be denied. Six-twenty dot two two zero, exceptions. Changes to this section were to, were to remove antiquated language and clearly illustrate the healthcare professionals that healthcare professionals are not subject to other requirements that massage therapists are subject to. If approved, the ordinance changes would be effective, become effective on September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, following publication on September twenty-sixth. The revised ordinance provisions would apply to all existing businesses, whether currently licensed as massage establishments or not, meaning there would be no grandfathering under the proposed code changes. Following the Finance and Administration Committee meeting on September sixth, twenty twenty-three, section two, six-twenty dot two two zero was amended to match the language used in the proposed definition of massage therapy or massage in six-twenty dot zero one zero. Mayor, I move the city council adopt amendments to chapter six twenty of the Mission Municipal Code Massage Establishments.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any member of the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I would open it up for council discussion. Any comments or questions from council? Yes, Ken?
First, I'd like to express my gratitude for staff and the mayor meeting with me and discussing the, the exception in the way in which it was re-stated. I appreciate that because I think that section six-two oh point two two zero makes it more in line with what the definition is at the very beginning and clarifies that for me. I still have some questions in terms of the implementation of this ordinance once it goes into effect. And I'd like to have a little bit of discussion about how that process would take place. If somebody can clarify that for.
Laura, do you want to speak to that?
I think the discussions that we've had internally is, we, we obviously have several businesses who are currently licensed as massage establishments and who have licensed massage therapists who are working in them. And we have several which have not been licensed as massage establishments or their employees licensed as massage therapists under the existing ordinance that would now be required to conform or comply under this. Our intent would be to really reach out to all of those impacted to just share the changes and make sure that everyone understands that, but essentially those licensing processes for those with, with who, who have currently registered and gone through that process, I think, I'm not sure we have any outstanding, Robin, I believe they're they're all current. And so you know, we, we actually have fielded calls this week about some, you know, other instances or other places. So we, we kind of, kind of keep our ear to the ground typically to see who's coming in and, and reaching out to them. And I think we've been very sort of collaborative and supportive as they kind of work through that process and helping them understand that. So we would certainly reach out to those who would now be required to license. I think that it would be our intent that we would not, under the massage establishment licensing process, there's a three hundred dollar fee at the initial time the establishment is licensed and then it's subject to our regular business licensing fees on an annual basis. I think we've talked at least initially about not requiring those who, this may be a new requirement for to pay that initial fee, especially if they've already have a current business license with us and we would just continue to kind of roll that forward. And so I think we would certainly be working with both the massage, those who would be holding the massage establishment license as well as working with them to identify those people working in their businesses who should be licensed, who are performing services which would be regulated under the changes that we've proposed. I don't know if that answers.
Okay, um, is this a different question, Ken? Because I want to, okay, go for it.
The question I have actually is those individuals who do not have a certification as a massage therapist would not be able to receive this permit from the city. Is that accurate?
That's correct, until such time as they were able to secure that.
And if they're currently performing those services, do they have any grace period to achieve that or is it something that would be immediately?
I think we were certainly, I mean, I, I think if we've in all cases, really try to be as reasonable as we possibly can. You know, and so I don't think it's, I, I think we would really work to try to understand if there are concerns as we have researched the changes to this ordinance and we've looked at how some of these other sub-specialties are licensed in other communities. They are holding employees in these businesses to the same standards as massage therapists. And it has not at least seemed to be problematic. They've been able to meet those requirements. And so I think we would certainly try to work to understand if someone needed some additional time to do that or what, what that might look like.
Yeah, Hillary?
Follow up to Ken's question, I think most of the requirements are pretty standard and wouldn't take very much time except for the licensing requirement as it relates to education. And I'm curious if you know for, you know, five hundred hours of, you know, And I'm curious if you know, for, you know, five hundred hours of, you know, massage or massage therapy licensing, what's the average time that that takes for an individual to get that completed?
I don't know what that is currently. I think we would have to look to them, or we can certainly reach out to some other folks. And maybe Councilmember Davis has a sense of that, but I don't know, off the top of my head this evening.
I don't.
So, can I follow up?
Yeah.
So less of a question, more of just a reflection as we think about, I understand not having the grandfathering in, but allowing a grace period that's a bit more, you know, codified in this conversation tonight, I think would, for me, make me feel a little bit better, you know, in knowing that some of those folks that will fall into that gap have an opportunity to remedy it and aren't just without.
And Councilmember Thomas, just to clarify, that's not on the massage license, that would be on the therapist's side and only the educational requirements?
Okay. Yes, Debbie?
Could you speak to number six two oh point oh one oh definition of what is a sub-specialty and what are other services similar in nature to massage? It's a vague statement, so I'm trying to grasp it.
If, are you looking at the, I don't, I think it's clear if you're looking at the actual.
I'm looking at both. I'm looking at what we have prepared and I'm looking at the actual definition of massage.
I think that might be the original, or is that the, are you looking at the updated ordinance?
So tell me again, it is the six two oh.
Oh, point oh one oh.
Right, so I think that the Dan, you may have to help me through this because I'm not, I'm not sure I'm looking at the right section.
I think, Debbie, that you're looking at the old definition.
This or this?
Maybe not.
I think I can, I can help answer some of those questions. The reason why that definition is a little bit more broad is because there are so many and so many, you know, pop up and can change names or, so we're trying to make sure that anything that resembles, you know, the manipulation of a human body would be covered under the same ordinance without having to name each specific type of sub-specialty.
Okay, what are you, what's a sub-special?
So if you look at the actual ordinance that's included in the packet and you go down on that first page of the ordinance to massage or massage therapy, that definition. So there are about halfway through there, the regulation of massage therapy in this chapter includes, but is not limited to sub-specialties of massage therapy such as acupressure, healing touch, cupping, Reiki, reflexology, Rolfing, trigger point. So those are some ones that we know, I think as the chief is saying, we know today some terminology or services that might be offered, but would not be limited to that.
Okay, and that would all be defined in the permit, correct? Or would it just be under the heading of massage?
No, this is the definition. If you adopt this ordinance this evening, this will be the new definition of massage or massage therapy that is included in our city code.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any further questions? Yes, Ken?
As you implement this, the question I have is this ordinance as it currently, if it's adopted, will allow you to do the background checks on individuals that are currently providing services there, is that correct?
Yes.
And then the decision in terms of grace period would be something would be determined by staff, is that correct?
I think certainly we would have the opportunity to notify these businesses to work through the process of identifying those employees which are offering or providing services within the business. Get the information that is collected as a part of the massage therapist permit. If there were something that would exclude them from proceeding in that process, I think that's, you know, that's an easy step. And then I think we'll have a better sense at that point of what we might be dealing with in terms of a need to look at a grace period. And I'd be happy to bring that back to the council and just kind of share, talk through what that might look like. But it's hard to estimate that at this point without knowing anything about the employees who are currently working in these or providing similar services.
Would that also allow staff to evaluate whether or not we need to have a subcategory definition of reflexologist as part of the ordinance or modification of the ordinance in some time in the future?
Yes, I would, I think as we've discussed, I think it is, we found in our research that that has not been kind of the standard practice. And I would, if there's a desire to explore that, or we feel like there's a need to explore that, I would really like to look at that because it's a tremendous administrative burden on staff to, as the research that we've looked at, I think when we talked about the changes that we made last year to the massage ordinance and the massage codes. Kansas is one of four states that doesn't regulate massage therapy at the state level. There are thirty-three states, as I understand it, that don't regulate reflexology at the state level, so it becomes a much more, there is a certification process. But I think, you know, let us kind of see where we are. Again, we have reached out to other communities with similar businesses to understand any hurdles that they might have encountered or decisions that they made imposing the massage therapist's educational requirements. And they've indicated it's not been an issue for them, so I'd hope we would not find that here, but we can certainly let us get, kind of get the ball rolling, if you will, and then we can evaluate that.
Yeah, Trent?
Just a quick comment. I'm in favor of kind of the intentionally vague definition aspect of this. I think, you know, who's to say in two thousand thirty, two thousand thirty-five, these types of things won't be called something different. And I just think it's a, like you said, administrative burden and slippery slope to try and carve out every single instance of this. Whereas the way that this is written now captures the spirit of what we're after, which gives us more leeway, I think, in kind of identifying these types of concerns. So anyway, I would just like to caution against trying to kind of identify all these sort of one-offs that could be called something different based, but in general is, you know, like Dan said, manipulating of the the tissue and human body and all that.
Yes, Ken?
I'd just like to voice what I had spoken to the chief, the mayor and Laura in her meeting. I believe that if this is an issue that is countywide that's going on, that needs to be credentialed in some fashion by municipalities, that it would behoove us to look at other ways of doing a countywide or all municipal adoption of similar regulations for the services or advocate at the state level that there be a licensing process that's established by the state of Kansas under the Board of Healing Arts or under some other existing board of credentialing for these services. So since the state does not do that at this time, that might be something that we would ask our lobbyists to engage in discussions at the state level and see if that's something that we could achieve so that each city doesn't have to adopt a different ordinance and then deal with cross-municipality issues where somebody's credentialed here, but then leaves there and comes here, et cetera.
Yeah. And I think to the extent that, I understand we did have that conversation and we can certainly speak with, you know, I think, I don't know who, the county health department or who might be interested in that. But I think to the extent that they're, in the absence of something countywide or at the statewide level, I think the similarity that exists, and you may recall when we made the other underlying changes to the ordinance last year, we looked at, I think, ordinances in almost all of the other Johnson County cities in terms of what they were doing. So we're really all sort of in step currently, and these changes sort of bring us in step with these other types of businesses as well. But that next step might be looking at taking that out of our hands and making that the responsibility of someone else.
Thank.
Yeah, Leah?
I just wanted to thank the council and the city for taking, staff for taking this so seriously. This is a very serious thing that needs to be worked through for the safety of our residents. And also thank Councilmember Davis for his knowledge of credentialing and the help that he provided.
Yeah, Debbie?
If the issue comes up additionally, the League of Kansas Municipalities is holding their annual meeting in October. That may be a good place to send this in if it's an issue.
Does anybody want to attend? Because right now we don't have any attendees at the.
Yes, Hillary.
Oh, no, Hillary's not going. I think she has a question.
Yes. Good suggestion, Councilmember Kring. I don't think we will have anybody in person, but we can certainly reach out to the league. Laura, I know you've spoken at this a couple of times already, but can you just help walk me through a little bit more on the education piece and help me understand? I understand if the other requirements, you know, need to be met and then visiting the education piece to see if it's even relevant to make sure. You know, I understand that, but as a council, I think my question is like, how do I feel, you know, comfortable in knowing what the process will look like, you know, internally from the staff side, you know, without knowing that this goes into effect a week from today and there's no grandfathering and then there's no other language speaking to a grace period. I'm just, you know, again, concerned for any employees that could potentially, you know, fall into that gap. What I would offer there is if it becomes a problem and council is dissatisfied with our approach, you can change this ordinance next month, you can call a special meeting, it takes one publication. So if there's something we need to fix or we're not handling it sort of appropriately, I think from our perspective, I think we have a situation where these businesses who aren't currently subject to these licensing requirements may be offering, based on what services they're publicly advertising on websites and in other places, that we are requiring the same educational requirements for others who have been issued permits. And so really trying to get in and understand what services are you providing and how should those be licensed? Because the things that are, you can see on a website in terms of a head, neck or shoulder massage is something that we would regulate, would currently be regulated under our massage therapy ordinances and would require those same level of training. So, you know, the question is, and I think you heard it last year from some of the folks that came to talk to us about concerns from licensed massage therapists about some of the lack of regulation or lack of scrutiny perhaps, or educational requirements that were given to some of these other sub-specialties and the difficulty in doing that. I don't know if that specifically answers your question, but I think, you know, we're trying to understand what services are being provided and making sure. And if we talk about level playing field, we want to make sure that we're not asking certain people to be licensed and meet these educational requirements and then having other businesses who may be providing similar services who don't have to conform to those same standards. I understand when the the massage places that are not currently identified as massage places originally came to the city, what was proposed in terms of what they would be offering? They indicated they would be offering reflexology services and that was not something that was regulated under our existing ordinances. Okay, and so it just wasn't specific, you know, in terms of, okay, what they were offering at that time, okay? So, thank you, I appreciate that. And if you could just keep us updated on the process as it goes, I would really, really appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, any more comments or questions? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll.
Boating House?
I.
Ryan?
I.
Loudon?
Hi.
Thomas?
Yes.
Josie?
I.
Davis?
I.
Kring?
I.
Motion case. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Loudon, will you please provide a report from the Community Development Committee?
The Community Development Committee also met on September sixth and considered five items, five items. The meeting minutes, Beverly Storm Sewer Relocation, Interlocal Agreement for two thousand twenty-three Storm Water System Renewal Project slash one dash M I dash two O two three dash R five oh one. Mission Street Repair, Broadmoor Park Trail Inspection Services and Nuisance Abatement Contract Award were approved under the consent agenda. An interlocal agreement for the Row Avenue Cars Project will be considered under the regular agenda this evening. Interlocal Agreement Row Avenue Cars Project, the city of Mission's proposed cars project for two thousand twenty-four is the Row Avenue Johnson Drive to sixty-third street rehabilitation project. This is a joint project between the cities of Mission, Roland Park and Fairway and has been approved by Johnson County for cars funding up to fifty percent of the project's construction and construction inspection costs. The proposed improvements include a two-inch mill and overlay, new pavement markings, a new traffic signal at Johnson Drive and Row, pavement and median repairs, spot replacement of curb and gutter sidewalks and ADA ramps. Additionally, the improvements include installation of a five-foot wide sidewalk on the east side of Row Avenue within Mission and Roland Park city limits. The interlocal agreement outlines the purpose, project financing, project financing for design services and project administration. Construction is estimated to begin in the spring of two thousand twenty-four. The preliminary total project cost is one million eight hundred forty-five thousand six hundred fifty-seven dollars with an estimated car's funding of eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Estimated costs for each city are Mission, six hundred and eight thousand sixty, sixty dollars and seven cents. Roland Park, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars, three hundred sixty-five dollars and eighty-six cents. And Fairway, two hundred fifteen thousand one hundred seventy-four dollars and fifty cents. There are no costs associated specifically with the execution of the interlocal agreement. It is the mechanism through which each participating city commits to funding their portion of the project. Mayor, I move the city council approve an agreement between the city of Mission, Kansas, and the cities of Roland Park, Kansas, and Fairway, Kansas, for the public improvement of Row Avenue from Johnson Drive to sixty-third street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this item? Yeah, Ben?
Just extremely excited about the sidewalk that's going on on the other side of that street that's badly needed, and I appreciate that consideration. So, thank you.
I forgot to ask for public comment. Do we have any member of the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, any further council questions? Seeing none, Robin, please call roll.
Josie?
I.
Thomas?
Yes.
Davis?
I.
Kring?
I.
Ryan?
I.
Boating House?
I.
Loudon?
Yes.
Motion case.
All right, we do not, or sorry, did I conclude your report? Didn't let you get it out. All right, so we do not have any unfinished business or new business tonight, therefore we will move into comments from the city council. This is the opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anyone on the council have something that they would like to share? Yes, Ken?
I know that I keep bringing this up as a concern. We did have an outage again today with Evergy. It was a very short outage, but I did get some comments again and requests for updates. I've shared the information that you provided last time. Have you heard anything further from Evergy?
Yes, so I heard right at the end of August, kind of preliminarily, you know, looking, I think I mentioned that that circuit was not scheduled for trimming again. They were going to go back out until two thousand twenty-five, they were going to go back out and patrol and look at that. Today's issue was a vegetation issue. It didn't indicate that on the website, on the outage map initially, but it was vegetation related. And it may not have been the only one because we had signals on the west side of town as well that were out earlier this morning, City Hall, Community Center, and kind of just that, and signals that shone at Mission Parkway and all. We've also been looking at some of the other infrastructure issues. Our representative was then on vacation for two weeks. He's now back in the office and we're coordinating calendars. I've asked him to see if we can't get a meeting scheduled before the end of this month to address those. So he got an email from me right after I called Brent and said.
That plates are out.
That plates are out.
Thank you for that update.
Yes, Debbie?
I just wanted to comment, we had a, an email that came from Brian Scott this week about the comprehensive master plan. And one of the things that was defined is all the staff hours that had been put forth, not only in the comprehensive master plan. But all the arenas that the city is trying to govern and manage with staff turnover and staff changes. And we may not always tell you how much we appreciate that, but giving that synopsis of what the staff's been working on and how many hours it's taken. I have a total appreciation for what you're doing and I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Thanks.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move into our council committee liaisons reports. These reports allow the entire governing body to stay up to date with the various activities of the boards, commissions and committees. First will be council members Crane and Thomas for sustainable, sustainability commission, which I understand featured a special guest.
Yes, Harper Thomas joined us up at the dais and quickly, quickly made her way to the mayor's chair. Um, Harper's my seven year old, that is. Um, yeah, Debbie will fill in on whatever I miss here. But note that we've got the Go Green Environmental Fair happening this Saturday here, not here, but at the community center. Lots happening with that event, which is really exciting. The commission debriefed on the recent workshops and climate summit from Climate Action KC. That was a couple of weeks ago. That was interesting to listen to for me to hear feedback on the event. Um, mostly good stuff, which is good. And Emily did report out that we're anticipated to receive. Um, all three carbon reduction grant funding requests that the city applied for this year, which is exciting. So just a couple of highlights, but Debbie, I'm sure I'm missing a couple of things.
No, just, just a reminder that environmental fair will be held at the community center this Saturday, the twenty-third from nine to twelve. And as of the other night, we had the sustainability meeting, there were over forty vendors included. Um, I also had a solid waste, I sit on a solid waste board for Johnson County. And I mentioned the fact that the environmental fair was this weekend and every person in, and there was probably thirteen, fourteen people. Every person knew about it, had the card and said they're planning on attending. So that's great news. Um, on the national front, it, it relates to sustainability. I sit on the board for energy, environment and natural resources. And we had a conference call this week about a variety of issues that they're going to take forth to the National League of Cities Conference in November. And one of those is an issue on PFAS and PFAS is considered a man-made manufactured chemical. Which is really taken over. It's kind of like the old lead used to be with all the priorities that are being placed on that. And its relationship to human health and the impacts that it's having. So some of those are going to be key issues that are going forth because it, it definitely affects water supplies. And the P, some of the PFAS chemicals are found in military installations, the foam that they use with the fire departments. There's a whole array of things that go across the gamut of chemical concerns as it relates to human health. So we'll be following up with that. I have another conference call next Wednesday, but I will bring that forth to sustainability. Because as it relates to water supply and, and municipal water functions, it possibly relates to Johnson County. So, thanks.
All right. Next up, we have council members Loudon and Ryher for Parks, Recreation and Tree Commission.
Uh, we met on Monday and Jenna and Jenny gave us a wrap up. Of how things went for the impact and the mission family camp. They both had very successful years, uh, or season this past year. One of the things that both of them expressed was how well things went staffing wise. They were fully staffed, their staff was fully engaged, got along really, really well, worked together. Helped with the picnic, helped with the improvements at the Sylvester Pal. And I, it all came down to getting paid a, a good wage. Um, and also the staff referral program also helps to keep the staff nice and solid. Because who doesn't want to go to work with their friends? And they had a lot of fun, worked really well. Um, Jenny said that it was the best staff she's had in nine years for the mission family camp. Which was really great and read a wonderful letter that one of the families whose children attended camp for the first time. A little, a little nervously at first and just expressed how great the staff was, how much fun the kids had. And, uh, and they were looking forward to going back next year. So I, I just really wanted to, to thank the council for raising the wages for the staff. I think it made a huge difference. We were one of the few pools that didn't have to close for days. Because there weren't enough staff members, uh, present to keep them safe. So, um, I know with a lot of the things that we have been talking about in the last few months. In terms of, of having to raise things, raising those wages really made a big difference. And then, uh, Penn also let us know that the grant request had been completed and sent to the state for phase two of Mohawk. Park for the land and water conservation fund, uh, project, four hundred pages. So thank you. That was a huge lift. Um, but we really, really appreciate your time and effort. And of course, there, we're working through a planning, um, that the, the planning commission is going to be, uh, looking at phase two. For Mohawk Park soon and, uh, hoping to great, break ground for that in April or May of two thousand twenty-four. The Broadmore Perimeter Trail is going on, which is exciting. Water Works, the construction document review. So we're hoping, is going on. We're hoping to get bids out in the next few weeks. And hoping to break ground in January. And, uh, it was suggested that maybe we include the students from Rushton in the groundbreaking ceremony. Um, so we might have to look at, at timing, uh, for that because they, they're all very excited. They spent a lot of time at that park, I can tell you. And then the spooky walk is coming up on, uh, Friday, October twentieth. So anyone who wants to volunteer for that would be very, very exciting. Um, and then we went over the proper recycling information. Um, and that was also asked if that could be put out on social media a little bit more. And, uh, I think that's it. Anything I missed?
All right, I took notes.
All right, thank you. We will now hear an update from Councilmember Voltinghouse on the Mission Magazine editorial board.
Yes, uh, unfortunately I was only able to attend for the first ten minutes due to attendance appointment. But in the ten minutes I was there, there was some strong, uh, positive feedback about the sustainability issue that just went out. People really liked looking at all of the tangible things people were doing around town. So that was definitely a hit and hopefully we can build on stuff like that in the future. And then we also just solicited story ideas going into next year. That's always kind of a fun round robin style exercise. So anything else, Laura, that you wanted to highlight?
Yeah, our, our fourth issue of this year is in the works, uh, themed around pets. Um, our fifth issue of the year will be arts and culture. And then we were talking about trying to continue the theme. And we had some, I think, really fun thoughts or ideas about some potential themes for next year. So look forward to brainstorming more when we meet in October.
Great. And finally, is Councilmember Josie with the Family Adoption Committee?
Thank you, Mayor. First on, on the topic of all the sustainability and parks and so on, it jogged my memory. I wanted to quickly thank staff and council and our vendors and partners for the walk and roll event that we had this past weekend. It was all a lot of fun and very enlightening and a, and a great way to take a look at what's going on with our trail system as we study the Rock Creek Trail. So that was awesome. Good, good to see everybody that was there and, uh, thanks everybody that worked on that. Um, for the Family Adoption Committee, I also had some challenges with attendance due to technical difficulties, which is really embarrassing when you're a software engineer. But, um, I got into Zoom eventually. Mostly just the usual logistical preparations, looking at, uh, space for storage and getting things like boxes and food donations sorted out. But, um, I think the thing of, of interest this time around is that I'm working with Penn on how we might set up, um, like an Amazon wishlist. To let people, uh, more easily purchase some of the gifts for the families. Just another avenue for donations that might be a little more convenient for folks. And that concludes my report.
All right, great. Um, next we have the mayor's report. I do have a couple of things that I wanted to share. First, I just wanted to congratulate Hillary on a fabulous Climate Action KC summit event.
You're here.
So, for anyone who doesn't know, Hillary is one of the lead, current leaders of that organization. As one of her other, uh, many non-council hats that she wears. And I think there were over five hundred attendees. There was a waitlist, um, to attend. Uh, Emily, who's not here tonight, helped me prep, uh, to be part of a local government implementation. Of the Climate Action Plan Panel. And I think we were a big success. So thanks to Emily for her support on that. And I think, um, we got a lot of people really engaged about thinking about what they could do to get their cities moving. On climate action for some of the just, you know, non-elected officials who are in the audience. That was really great. Good conversations with folks, a lot of really positive energy. And then just would second what Ben said about the walk and roll. I think that was one of the best turnouts I've seen. You know, in terms of getting people signed up and ready to attend something where we're looking for public input and feedback. And so thanks to Brian and Carrie and the rest of the team, um, for that. And I know my group was really, really engaged. Everyone was, you know, wanting to give lots of inputs. I'm hoping we'll have a lot of really good ideas moving that planning sustainable places grant forward. Yes, Hillary.
Thank you. I should have said this during comments, but I, I do want to share that there was standing room only in Sally's panel. And that was my poor planning for my room choice, but I was like, oh, you know, city stuff, maybe that, not that many people will come. But no, it was about two hundred and fifty people jammed into a one hundred and fifteen person room. And, um, so much feedback about just mission, mission, mission. And it was just an energy, you know, about mission and just how we're really leading the way in so many, in so many fronts. And so thank you, Mayor, for your leadership and a lot of that work.
Yeah, it was, it was a really great conversation. And it's always good, um, you know, to see the energy. Sometimes it can feel a little doomsday, but I think Climate Action KC from the beginning has been about, you know, what can, what can we all do? And, you know, even every bit matters. And so I think everyone really bought into that and it was fabulous event.
I saw at least three of the mission delegation arrived by bicycle. So that was.
Yeah. And we had a really big mission delegation too. So way to, way to turn out.
I, a coworker of mine was there and said that, yeah, it, it appeared that mission was cosponsoring. Which I thought was a fun thing to say.
Well, we were one, one of the event sponsors, but yes, perhaps not a headlining sponsor. But yeah, lots of enthusiasm and engagement across our staff and council and boards and commissions. So really good to see. Next, we have our city administrators report. Laura, do you have anything else for us?
Um, just a couple of things, just a reminder. And I, Robin, did you send a calendar invite for next week's work session? Okay. So next week we will have a work session, six PM, uh, on Wednesday, the twenty-seventh. Where we'll be looking at. The tax abatement request from John Moffett on his fifty-eighth and Noll project. And then, uh, I think there's a budget certificate, three budget certificates that are floating around. I will throw myself in front of the door. Please sign those before you leave this evening. So we can get the budget wrapped up and sent off to the county clerk. Just a lot going on on a lot of fronts as we've all talked about. We had Brent and I, uh, attended a meeting, kind of an ongoing continuing conversation with KDOT. And the city of Overland Park about the improvements to the Johnson Drive Metcalf intersection and bridge. And so more to come, I think, before the end of the year on that, but, um, still trying to get some answers and, uh, kind of work through that process. With all of the interested parties. And I think that's all I have to say. Yeah, Debbie?
I think we have a ribbon cutting at Victor's Upholstery tomorrow afternoon.
We do.
What, four o'clock?
Four o'clock.
And then, uh, do we have any other business updates this month?
We do not have any business updates this month.
Okay. Before we adjourn tonight, I just want to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website at missionks.org. There being no further business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.